Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 7th, 2014. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction as we undertake to act on the various affairs of business before the City Council. We are ever mindful that as a community, we are constantly growing and changing and that we are in need of constantly watching out for what are in the best interests of our community, and each and every member of the council here, I know, serves with great degree of dignity and concern and passion for the best interests of Batavia. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of these men and women and whatever part of the country they are from as they go upon in their valuable duty of defending our liberties and protecting our future. Tonight, we also want to be thankful for the many acts of support that have been shown by our city employees over the recent holiday period, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go about their duties, sometimes dangerous but vital that they perform in service to the citizens of Batavia. Tonight, as always, we just ask for guidance and direction and knowing that we are here at the end of the day to do what is in the very best interest of City Batavia. Amen. Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would lead the allegiance to the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
And before I call the roll, Alderman Stark, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just a reminder, you're not going to be counted here until we vote to have you attend the meeting.
I'm waiting.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark is absent. Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vassillion?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?[200.28][200.28]14 yes, 1 no, 1 absent.
Alderman Stark, you are now part of the meeting. Congratulations after that controversial vote. All right, moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks, this is Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one change. There will be taking off number 17, the executive session, and I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no-no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number five on our agenda, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this, please?
Thank you. To accept and place on file, A, the Plan Commission minutes for June 4th, 2014; B, the May financials approvals; R, C, the June 20th, 2014 payroll, amount is $730,723.76; the June 26th, 2014 payroll, an amount of $13,232.91; the July 3rd, 2014 payroll, an amount of $740,110.26; D, the accounts payable check register, the amount of $5,215,267.21; E, Resolution 14-78-R, accepting dedication of part of Myrtle Street; F, Ordinance 14-37, vacating part of Woodland Avenue; G, Ordinance 14-39, establishing a hotel tax; H, Resolution 14-81-R, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Park District for the utilization of vehicle fueling facilities. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
So, second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Vassillion for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no-no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number five on our agenda, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this, please?
Thank you. To accept and place on file, A, the Plan Commission minutes for June 4th, 2014; B, the May financials approvals; R, C, the June 20th, 2014 payroll, amount is $730,723.76; the June 26th, 2014 payroll, an amount of $13,232.91; the July 3rd, 2014 payroll, an amount of $740,110.26; D, the accounts payable check register, the amount of $5,215,267.21; E, Resolution 14-78-R, accepting dedication of part of Myrtle Street; F, Ordinance 14-37, vacating part of Woodland Avenue; G, Ordinance 14-39, establishing a hotel tax; H, Resolution 14-81-R, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Park District for the utilization of vehicle fueling facilities. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
So, second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Vassillion for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. 14 yes, no-no's, none absent. Moving then to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience this evening who wishes to dresses for something not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven. It says we're going to have a presentation in Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Holly, would you come forward, please?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I have just two events that I think are very important for us to discuss here today. One, we have Windmill City Fest coming up this week here in Batavia, so I wanted to formally invite you to our chamber mixer. The festival is opening up on Thursday night this year instead of the usual Friday. There will be a band playing at the Pegbon Center, and also the Beer Garden will be open. So, we welcome you all to attend, rub elbows with some of our members of the chamber, people that are interested in what is going on in business in Batavia, and also, the remainder of the festival will be amazing. Many of you know that this used to be Boo Boo Days, and I wrote a little piece about this in Neighbors that I stole some facts from George Sheets at the Batavia Public Library that the first Boo Boo Days, which was the originator of the Windmill City Fest, was in August of 1956. So, and it remained the Boo Boo Days until 1978, when it changed to more of a carnival and entertainment type atmosphere. So, we've been, and the Batavia Chamber was the originator of the first Boo Boo Days. So, we've been partnering with the Park District since it became the Windmill City Fest and very, very happy to be a part of that and expanding our participation a little bit this year to include that Thursday night mixer. So, please join us and have a good time with some of our local business men and women. Next, we have a chili cook-off. This is not the first, but the 22nd Annual Illinois State Championship Chili Cook-off is coming to Batavia on Saturday, July 26th, at 12:00 noon, and that will be going on. The award ceremony will happen at about 4:00. So, again, the Chamber is partnering with the Park District. It used to be managed by a local family here in Batavia and that brought it out, and they wanted to retire from it after those many years, and so they approached the Park District, and we decided to partner with them on this event. So, we're going to expand it a little bit this year. We're going to put some more signage out, so get some more foot traffic for people coming and tasting some of this award-winning chili here in Batavia, and also, we are adding a restaurant division and a homestyle division. So, if you think that you have the best chili, please come down and challenge all of your neighbors and friends to a chili cook-off. We also have, as I said, invited many local restaurants to participate, and hopefully we will get some entrance in that division as well. Many prizes, some great, awesome trophies that look like the state of Illinois with a little chili pepper top, and I'm sure that you would love to display one of those in your office or home. So, please join us again on Saturday, July 26th, at about noon for the chili cook-off in Batavia.
It'll be right out here in the River Walk?
It will be right here in the River Walk, as it has been, and we'll have some signage around town pointing people down here. You can get a tasting cup for $5, and you get to taste all the different chilies that are out there, and it's a great event, and we will also, recognizing the fact that there is a slight flaw in the scheduling of having a chili cook-off in the middle of the summer, we will be hoping to, through the process of taking this over, modifying that schedule a little bit, maybe pushing it more towards either the spring or the fall in the future. But we are dealing the hand, or playing with the hand that we were dealt this time, and we're going to make the best of it, so Oso Romeo is going to come out and bring some gelato to try to balance it out a little bit, so. Any comments, questions?
Questions? Well, thank you, and thank the Chamber of Commerce for your continued vital support on so many fronts of things we're doing in Batavia, and your role and your participation and your partnership that you share with us, so appreciate all the good efforts you're doing.
And we love doing it. Happy summer.
All right, next is moving to item number eight, which is the appointment of paid-on-call fire department recruits. And Chief, I'm afraid I'm going to butcher up a couple of these names. Do you want to read the names for me so I can not mispronounce them?
Not a problem, and I'll also give you a little background on each one. All three of them are recent graduates from the College of DuPage firefighter training program. So, the first one is Nicholas Ottenreth. Nick, if you can come forward, please. Nico lives in Aurora. He is a certified basic operations firefighter and a licensed EMT and is pursuing a degree in fire science. Tim Dorsey, Tim, come forward. Tim lives in St. Charles. He's a certified basic operations firefighter and a licensed paramedic. And then Darius Vitikas, he lives in Batavia, and he's also a certified basic operations firefighter and a licensed paramedic.
Okay, gentlemen, we have to put you up here in the center of the circle so we can get you based on TV, so if you all just come on in here.
Mayor, grab the mic.
I have to use the mic so they can hear this on TV.
If you would all raise your right hands and state your names.
Nicholas Ottenreth.
Timothy Dorsey.
I just want you to...
And then just repeat what I'm going to say here. Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call firefighter?
To the position of paid-on-call firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia?
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duson, we swear?
Duson, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit?
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome. That's it. Well, we wish those gentlemen many, many years of safe and fruitful public service, and thank them for stepping forward. So, on behalf of the people of Batavia, we greatly appreciate their efforts. Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is Ordinance 14-38, amending the text of the zoning code and repealing Ordinance 14-32. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, we've got an ordinance here in front of us tonight, Ordinance 14-38. First thing it's going to do is it's going to repeal the ordinance that we created 90 days, 120 days ago or so, that created a moratorium on any future permits or non-sales tax-producing uses in a general commercial district. So, that ordinance will be repealed with the passage of this. A couple other items that will be, go into effect with this ordinance is the amount of sales, non-sales tax-producing businesses that will be allowed in a GC district. There was quite a lot of discussion on this at the J-Cow. It obviously went through Plan Commission, and there was discussion at the Plan Commission. There was one business owner that discussed this, brought up their points at the Plan Commission along with the J-Cow. Staff's recommendation originally started out at 50% of the square footage to be allowed as a non-retail. J-Cow had some discussion about this. We asked staff to go back and analyze the existing square footage out there now and how much of it is non-sales tax and how much of it is sales tax-producing. They created quite the spreadsheet for us, which was very useful in analyzing this and making a decision. Their recommendation then changed to a 25% maximum usage. It went to Plan Commission. Plan Commission had the discussion, and they kind of upped it to 35% is what they thought might be a more reasonable amount, and that was after the discussion from the property owners that were there talking. J-Cow discussed this. We listened to the property owners' concerns, and we came out of it with the recommendation for a 25% maximum usage of non-retail. As you know, Mayor, you've been very much supportive of this over the years. That's our tax-producing engine out there, Randall Road is, and we need to be very, very cautious as to what we do out there. We can, in the future, always change it again. If we want to up at the 30% or 35% or 50% or take it back down to 10%, we can do what we feel is right to do in the future as we see fit. But right now, we saw a need to address it. The market is constantly changing, and so that's why we were working with staff to make this alteration. A couple other items that were discussed in this or that are in this ordinance is the temporary usage of a temporary parking lot in the downtown business district. There's quite a lot of need for additional parking right now, but not knowing exactly what the future is going to bring and how and where permanent parking lots will be located, whether they be parking decks or just future lots, the history will, or the future will tell. But right now, we realize that we do need additional parking, and we're trying to provide that for the businesses and for the residents without spending an awful lot of money. So, this ordinance allows for that. It allows for a temporary parking lot to be put into place with a maximum of a five-year period tied to it. With that, we're going to bypass, I guess you could say, some of what the permanent parking lot restrictions would be, which is a permanent screening for the parking lot, for the cars and headlights and such. So, in the ordinance, we've got some provisions in there that will allow for not having to put curb and gutter in there, not having to provide for all the stormwater that would normally be provided for under a permanent situation, and the screening would be provided for by just putting in some grass of some type, some tall prairie grass that would be three feet high by July 15th. So, there's restrictions in here. It doesn't give us carte blanche, just to go out there and throw parking lots willy-nilly here and there and everywhere without being very sensitive to the looks and the community, but it is something that staff and the council felt was very necessary to do for the downtown. Those are the two biggest things that I can think of off the top of my head that were in this ordinance that changed it, other than the, like I say, the repealing of ordinance 14-32, so that the businesses out there can keep making decisions and move on with what they need to do. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I move for approval of Ordinance 14-38.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Ordinance...
14-38.
14-, I thought it says 14-32.
It's repealing.
That's the repealing, okay. 38. Any discussion? I just want to make note that in our discussions, we talk about the potential of making a conditional use, also be subject to agreeing that they're going to source their sales tax in Batavia, and we asked the city attorney to do some research on that, and he and I have had some preliminary discussions back and forth, so I'm going to certainly hold open that we may be coming back relatively quick with some kind of an amendment, maybe an amendment to this ordinance or some other type of whatever Kevin decides is maybe the proper way to go, that we can kind of try to lock down the sourcing of sales tax as part of a zoning use. And it's an interesting prospect. I've talked to the RTA folks about it, and they seem to be very interested in seeing if we can facilitate this, because it could be, may take some enabling legislation at the end of the day at the state level, but it's an idea that, you know, I think we should be prepared to try to promote and defend if we have to, because we are starting to see a continuation of signs of people trying to relocate their sales, while they wanted to stay in your town and do business and use all your services and take the wear and tear on your streets and your facilities, they want to source their sales tax that's being generated out of your community to some other town where they can get them to give them 80% of it back. So, obviously, that's a sore point of discussion with a lot of cities, including our own, and it is a high point of conversation right now at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and we're scheduling a meeting with the Illinois Department of Revenue in the near term to have a conversation with them about, you know, what they really think should be going on here, because it appears that this isn't going away and that there's other businesses attempting to do it, literally at this moment, trying to move themselves, while they stay in business near town and do everything, they go someplace specifically beyond the RTA service area so they don't have to subject themselves to the RTA tax. And that's another whole can of worms, because by moving themselves out of the RTA area, they take that tax away, which should be rightfully paid to the RTA. In the case of Kane County, it's a quarter cent; in Cook County, it's a cent; in the other collars, it's a quarter cent. But the RTA is estimating they're losing between $100 million and $200 million a year at a time when they got all their switches freezing and their viaducts are starting to crumble, and they're, and they have a serious revenue need, and to divert this money and not pay it or play a trick by not, by moving yourself out of the RTA service area so you're not subjected to the tax, just is really, in my opinion, it's kind of a dirty pool, and it's, for some reason, there's a lot of people in the region that don't want to talk about this. You know, it's kind of like the dirty little secret that nobody wants to pull out, and we haven't gotten a lot of press about it, and I wonder about that, too, but anyway, we'll see where that all goes.
Well, I would welcome you to bring this revision back to us, and as you know, Mayor, I've been very supportive of what you're talking about here, and if there's anything I can do for you as my individual self or as Chairman of CDC, I'd be happy to speak out in favor of what you're talking about, and let's get it back to committee and make this something that...
Well, we can go ahead and pass this.
Right, right, right.
We may want to be coming back with some type of mandatory language or some new language on another document or another ordinance. I guess we're not quite sure yet.
Right.
Any other comments on this?
I have a comment. There's a lot in this ordinance, and I generally support it except for limiting the non-retail uses to 25% in the area along Randall Road. I think, given this market, it's a tough leasing market. I think 25% might be a little arbitrary. I'd like to see a little bit more discussion on it, maybe see it a little bit higher, and maybe see some discussion on a service fee instead, so I won't be supporting it.
Other discussion?
I will not be supporting this for the same reasons.
I think it's undue restriction on businesses until we can talk through some other avenues, so.
All right. Any others? Kirk, call the roll then, Ordinance 14-38.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
No.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Abstained.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 14-80-R is approved. Thirteen yes, noes, one abstention. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which I think we should regard as very positive and good news for the community of Batavia, showing we are moving forward with some new exciting development. And that's Resolution 14-82-R, approval of the final plat for subdivision of Tanglewood Hills. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, it is very good for the City Batavia to see this come in front of us tonight. It is the final step of the Tanglewood Hills approval. And Unit 5 has been bought by Toll Brothers. They are here tonight, sitting with us tonight in the audience. And they have been, from what I understand, very, very positive and very good to work with, not only with staff, but with us as the city council, the existing homeowners out there, the existing homeowners associations. They really took this project on and took it, in my opinion, the right way from the very beginning. The first thing they did was they met with the homeowners and they started working with them, presenting to them what it was they wanted to do and how could they work with them. And, you know, the existing homeowners, how could they work with them and what were their concerns? And making sure that their Unit 5 was going to fit in with the existing association and the existing clubhouse restrictions that they have out there and all. So I can't say enough positive about them. And from what I understand, they've been very appreciative of the good work that the city staff has done with them. And I think they feel as though it's been a pretty smooth process on their behalf. So it's, this Resolution 1482-R is approving the final plat of the subdivision for Tanglewood Hills, Unit 5. It's in basic conformance with the original plat, preliminary plat. There's been a few things that were changed. There always is as they work through the process. The applicant, Toll Brothers, has made those changes. And here it is in front of us tonight for approval. I believe they're ready to get started as soon as they get the vote. So I move for approval of Resolution 14-82-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 14-82-R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Abstained.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 14-80-R is approved. Thirteen yes, noes, one abstention. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which I think we should regard as very positive and good news for the community of Batavia, showing we are moving forward with some new exciting development. And that's Resolution 14-82-R, approval of the final plat for subdivision of Tanglewood Hills. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, it is very good for the City Batavia to see this come in front of us tonight. It is the final step of the Tanglewood Hills approval. And Unit 5 has been bought by Toll Brothers. They are here tonight, sitting with us tonight in the audience. And they have been, from what I understand, very, very positive and very good to work with, not only with staff, but with us as the city council, the existing homeowners out there, the existing homeowners associations. They really took this project on and took it, in my opinion, the right way from the very beginning. The first thing they did was they met with the homeowners and they started working with them, presenting to them what it was they wanted to do and how could they work with them. And, you know, the existing homeowners, how could they work with them and what were their concerns? And making sure that their Unit 5 was going to fit in with the existing association and the existing clubhouse restrictions that they have out there and all. So I can't say enough positive about them. And from what I understand, they've been very appreciative of the good work that the city staff has done with them. And I think they feel as though it's been a pretty smooth process on their behalf. So it's, this Resolution 1482-R is approving the final plat of the subdivision for Tanglewood Hills, Unit 5. It's in basic conformance with the original plat, preliminary plat. There's been a few things that were changed. There always is as they work through the process. The applicant, Toll Brothers, has made those changes. And here it is in front of us tonight for approval. I believe they're ready to get started as soon as they get the vote. So I move for approval of Resolution 14-82-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 14-82-R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Abstained.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
motions approved. Fourteen yes, noes, none absent. Gentlemen, welcome to Batavia.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, moving to item number 12, which is Resolution 14-83-R, authorizing the appointment of William McGrath as interim IMRF authorized agent. As I believe all of you know, that is normally held by the assistant city administrator, of which we have a vacancy at the moment. So we need to appoint Mr. McGrath to that position in an interim basis. And I'd ask for a motion of confirmation to this.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motors approved. Fourteen yes, noes, none absent. Okay, moving to 13, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. The budget process is just starting. We sent out earlier this year our 2015 budget calendar. I'll ask Finance to send that out to you again. We won't be having meetings with the J-COW until October, but I wanted you to know how the process starts. The Finance Department is doing a lot of inputting. They have to set up some new funds and accounts. They do some research and set up a new IMRF rate, which is based on what our experience has been in the last year. Then we start looking at actual 2013 expenditures, actual expenditures, and then start looking at our 2014 expected expenditures and starting to do our planning processes. We will be coming outside of the budget, but related to it, we will be coming to J-COW with a discussion of the current CIP plan to see if you're comfortable with that because that, of course, is one of the important parts of the budget. I do have a lot of building-type activities to talk about. Karen Young from Engineering will be forwarding or coming forward with the firm Civil Tech to recommend it to do the design engineering for Main Street. That should happen this month. She also plans on bringing the street program forward by the end of July. As there was some discussion about the temporary parking lots, Noel Baskin will be bringing the design for the Art Stop Lot at the southeast corner of River and Wilson, as well as a small section of the Baptist Church property, which we own, which could most accurately be described as kind of a grassy plot between the Batavia Insurance Building and Dr. Fisher's dental building. We think we can get seven or eight additional spaces there. And although this ordinance allows us to not build parking lots to the extent we would if they were going to be permanent, we are going to be very careful to make sure that they look good aesthetically. We're certainly going to pay a lot of attention to drainage, but this will also give us the flexibility to try maybe some strategies, some novel strategies, such as some rain gardens and things like that. But the idea, again, is that these will be around no longer than five years, or we will bring in a plan to convert them into permanent lots. I think in total, we will be bringing in, these projects will give us about another 25 parking spaces in the immediate downtown on that, in that quadrant. The, we'll be bringing a proposal for the Houston Street Construction Manager to J-COW in the first week of August. We sent out, asked four companies who do this kind of area because, do this kind of work. There are very few firms that actually do construction management for street projects as opposed to building projects themselves. So we sent it out to four companies. We only got two responses and we'll be bringing one forward to recommend to you at the first week of August. The pedestrian crossing lights, those contracts will be let on August 1st. And the installation could occur this year. It all depends on what the availability is of the equipment and how long it takes to get through the state approval process. So as soon as that, the bid is let, we will start working with the contractor and see what the story is with the equipment and let everyone know. Brush pickup continues this summer. The East Side next Monday for the entire week. People are asked to have their brush out by 7:00 on Monday morning. The West Side will be the week after on July 21st, followed by August 11th on the East Side and August 18th on the West Side. It does go forward September, October, and then December. Go to the website for, to get these dates all over again. If you recall, we were working on the Main Street reconstruction for 2016. And one of the issues there is that we want to use that. There are several sections of combined sewers that cross over and through the construction area of Main Street. So in combination with that project, we will be uncombining some of the sewers, storm sewers and sanitary sewers in that area. That plan is almost done. The design for that will be done at the same time as Phase 1 for Main Street. But I think Andrea will be coming in to make a presentation to just show you what that's all about. Safe routes to school is moving along. A non-city project, but something of interest, I think, to the citizens is that KDOT is going to be letting a contract on August 1st for an improvement on northbound Kirk Road at Douglas. They'll be building a left-hand turn lane. I think we all believe that there's enough activity there that a left-turn lane is warranted. So hopefully that will be happening this year as well. And let's see. We're relooking at the entire subdivision code. We've put out some changes just among staff. And when that gets ironed out, then we'll be bringing that to J-COW for a discussion. I think I mentioned last week at J-COW, the RFPs for the new city website are out. And we're moving ahead with an agreement with another software company for an asset management program. And we'll be, we're working out an agreement and we'll be bringing that to J-COW as well. That's a budgeted and planned item. Lastly, tomorrow night, we'll be discussing a modest incentive to assist one of the largest lighting companies in the hotel field to move its operations here from Elgin. So that's all I have. I'll be sending this out in writing.
Any comments or questions for the city administrator? Alderman Chansett?
Real briefly, a couple of us were chatting before the meeting. Wanted to know if we can get the dam on the, one of the J-COW, this meeting's coming up, so we could-
Sure.
See how we're feeling.
Sure. If two of you are asking-
Callahan?
I'd also like to bring up the, I received another, some discussions over the weekend and recall even as of 7:00 tonight about the speed limits in residential going down to 25. So if another Alderman would join me, I'd like to make sure we could-
I'll join you.
I'll do that.
Thank you. See if we could put that on, whichever is good. I know the 29th has the school district, maybe the 5th.
Okay. One thing Bill said that I just want to really emphasize, the staff has been working on this uncombining of the sanitary and the storm sewer over on Main Street. And I want to tell you that of all the things that, you know, the past city councils saddled us with, that was probably one of the bad ideas that went forward at the turn of, well, when we installed some of this, way going back, you know, almost 100 years ago, the idea that you were going to put your storm water and your sanitary water in the same pipes over there on the west side, which is where most of it was in the early days on the southwest side. Specifically, you know, we've had, in my time as mayor, there's been a number of basement backups where the sanitary sewer comes up through the storm tiles in the basement. And secondly, you know, I've been sitting through all the various renditions and enhancements and expansions of the sewer plant that have taken place during my time as first the newspaper reporter and later as a public official. You know, the idea that we could separate those and get all that storm water from going into the sewer plant, I think would be a real blessing in disguise for the Batavia Sewer Plant not to have to deal with all that storm water. So of all the things we're spending money on for the future, someday there will be a city council and mayor sitting here thanking whomever completes doing this that we got all that stuff out of the way and changed because of things that need to be done. That certainly is one of them. And the predominant amount of that is still down there on the kind of the immediate southwest side of town. They're just south of the downtown area. And slowly but surely, we've hacked away at it and taken a bunch of it out of place. So it's not quite as bad as it used to be, but there's still some remnants of it down there that do need to be dealt with. And, you know, as we found with replacing some of the water mains that we've been doing here recently, John Dillon tells me that there was a large percentage of the really good treated water of Batavia that we were pumping into those pipes that was never going anyplace other than leaking out because they had laid in ground for a long time and been shifted and cracked and busted. And so it was just a good investment for the future of the water utility to replace that pipe. And it's hard to talk to the public and get people to understand the value of that type of stuff. But at the end of the day, that's really some stuff we're doing here that will bear fruits for generations to come. That combination of sanitary and storm is just a bad idea. And at the time, I guess it was the only way we could do it. But we really need to get that out of our life as soon as we can. Anybody else?
I'd like to say thank you for those comments. I think, well, that is important stuff and I fully support that, separating those two sewers.
Alderman Clark?
I just wanted to say, I've been getting a lot of comments from residents about how good the downtown looks. And it's so nice to hear something positive when you talk to people. But numerous people, not me, you know, asking for input, they just come up and tell me how nice everything looks, the flowers, the beds, the improvements we made are being noticed in a good way. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
And I'm getting comments from non-residents, you know. So I think that's really great, too.
I wondered around the Fourth of July fireworks program, I was out there from 5:00 and left at 3 minutes to midnight the other night. And while I was there, I kept counting my head. I had 12 different citizens come up to me and say, "I really like what you've been doing downtown, what the city council's been doing downtown." So, I mean, that, as Alderman Clark says, there is a lot of people who have noticed that. I mean, it really has gotten more positive spin than probably anything we've done in the recent past here. And I remember all the moments of sweat and consternation that we collectively went through as we talked about architects and design and ideas and this and that and bashed a bunch of stuff back and forward. At the end of the day, hopefully, it's all worth it that we have gotten it. Most importantly, hopefully, I had several people mention it to me again at the Saturday morning at the farmer's market, that, you know, gee, you have the opportunity to just continue to do this right up the street. And hopefully, future city councils will have that opportunity to kind of pick up what was started in that first block and go all the way north. And you've got riverfrontage exposure on all those blocks going north there. Just a grand opportunity for some really neat redevelopment for this town.
It should also probably be mentioned, I sent the email out, and I think, Bill, you sent it out too, about the other award that River Street won. There's been so many awards that they've won now, I can't remember the exact one it was. Now, maybe we could put that on the website also, what that award was for the walkable bricks and all this kind of stuff on River Street. And then I was gonna, I'm glad you brought this up, Lisa, Lucy and everybody else, but I was going to ask if at some time in the future, and I know it takes a little bit of time after you make a change in the configuration of streets, if at some time in the future, maybe police and fire could take a look at, you know, when we were talking about the design and the configuration of Wilson Street, there was an awful lot of discussion about narrowing the street and eliminating a portion of a lane and putting all the bump outs in and such. And I'm just wondering, do you have an opinion now of the way it is? Because I know you were around at the time the conversation was had also. So is there an opinion from staff as to, gee, maybe next time we should not do this, or maybe everything turned out better than we thought? Just maybe some conversation for J-COW.
May I just get on to what you've been saying, kind of piggyback onto it, that, you know, River Street has been highly successful. Wilson Street has been recognized and it's going to be very successful. It's beautiful. People walking about. We have Houston Street coming up. So let's not forget that, you know, it's an investment that we have to make in our community, in our downtown. And I think it'll be highly successful again if we do it the right way. And so, you know, there's an article in the paper today, today's paper about bicycles and trying to get bike riders into our city. You know, we have very many bike riders coming through our city. And I think Houston Street with that original design by Altamont, you know, lend itself to bike riding. It'd just be a pretty street to ride your bike down or walk down, you know, the boulevard look. So I think we're moving forward in a very good direction as a city and as a council. And I'd like to, you know, just continue on with that.
All right, anybody else? Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night at J-COW, July 8th at 7:30. CDC's got just a couple items on their agenda. The only one that's really on the calendar here is general discussion on development. Not sure what staff has got up their sleeve for us on that one, but that's what we've got on our agenda. Plan Commission for Wednesday night at 7:30 has been canceled. Historic preservation for Monday, July 14th at 5:30 is scheduled. I'm not sure what's on their agenda, but there is a meeting scheduled at this point. That's all I have.
Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Looking at the calendar, it doesn't appear that there's anything with regards to public utilities for the next couple meetings. So nothing to report.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing that we have on J-COW that's coming up on July 15th would be for temporary parking lots.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you. Tomorrow, July 8th, we have two items on the agenda, incentive for Challenger Lighting, a closed session on personnel. On July 15th, we will have a presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report by the city auditor, Sickich. That's all I have.
We have other business from anybody on the city council?
Your Honor, one thing. As my position as chair on the BATV board, I'd like to come to the city council and just ask for a favor. I'd like everybody on the council to try and even staff to try the BATV website, just as kind of a little beta test, have everybody
years, both as a fireman and as a policeman and then as the mayor, so I've had a lot of experience. I can't think of a better night for weather, the wind and the directions and just the atmosphere out there. I don't know if we had any, Chief Shire, I don't think we had any major police issues at all.
It went very smooth.
It went very smooth. Certainly, the fire department was extraordinary and all the support that they had, and brought the trucks out afterwards, and we flashed the lights, and a lot of people threw money in as they're walking out of there, which was something that we wanted to add. I really, I appreciate Alderman Stark's comments about the community ban. That was, I think, something that opened a lot of people's eyes, that we had so many volunteers, you know, non-school aides that wanted to be in a band, that were willing to come forward and help out, and I just got rave reviews about that from a variety of folks. So, all things considered, you know, I want to publicly thank the Batavia Fireworks Committee and those who worked year-long on this thing to get it up and going and really move it forward, and, you know, the resounding positive comments that have rolled in both that night and over the weekend and today from people who've stopped in or called or whatever has been, you know, very, made the city look very good, because we're the sponsoring agency and we're the ones that write the insurance policy and waive all the fees and provide some of the backup staff. But, you know, as I said to the crowd the other night, the real badge of honor for that whole thing is, is that for sixty-five years, we have always paid for that entire show by public donations, as fires, fireworks go. So, nothing that you see flying up in the sky has ever been paid for with property tax dollars, that that is really coming from the heart and soul of the Batavia community, and that's something that they should really wear as a badge of honor or pride, that, you know, they're honoring their country and its birthday every year, and they're doing it with their own money and their own sweat equity and really making things, you know, really make a shine. And I really was, you know, my head was swelling as I was standing there the other night, because several people, I had a guy come up and tell me he was from Mundeline, I had another guy tell me he was from Franklin Park, I had another guy tell me that he was from Homewood, that were all there, that said they couldn't believe what a nice show this was and how proud Batavia should be in doing it that way. And so, we just did a lot of things that a lot of people liked and really was most successful. And, you know, not even counting all the probably hundreds, if not thousands, of home parties that were going on in Batavia that night, that people were entertaining, big crowds of relatives and friends in all the surrounding subdivisions that weren't even physically on the property of the site of the fireworks, but was up high enough that they could enjoy it. I know the Emmanuel Lutheran Church over on Hart Road had a, some kind of a concert prior to the fireworks, and then they had everybody's, and they're so high that they all went out there and sat on the hill and said they could see the show perfectly from where they were. And again, we had a huge crowd over on the east side watching it. So, it speaks well to, you know, what we're all about, and I guess at the end of the day, those are the things that make Batavia special and unique and why people like to live here and are proud of the place, and so, you know, we should be very proud of how that all came out. So, thanks to everybody involved. It really was a memorable night on a very positive front. Anybody else on the council? All right, well, I just want to take one, a couple minutes here, because I got a call again today, and I'm, you know, I think I have an idea where we want to go, but I think I want to hear from all of you. Mr. Richards from the VFW called me this afternoon and wants to know how quickly we are going to be taking some type of a decision on video poker. And are we going to act on the VFW's request to allow them to go into video poker business? The staff's been doing some exploration on it. I don't know if we're ready to give you a recommendation. I will tell you personally, I'm not really excited about the idea, I guess I would describe myself. I've talked to some of the other mayors in the region who have it, and most of them say, "Well, it's there," and the city's share of the revenue is five percent. And I had a recent conversation with the mayor of Elgin, who told me he had, I don't want to share his numbers, he has quite a few machines, he wasn't getting much revenue, but he's got the casinos sitting there in the downtown, too. So, I don't know if I think it's a revenue source. You know, in the case of the VFW, I think they would like to have it, because it would be another source of revenue for them to kind of sustain their operations, and I can't be faulted for that. You know, I don't know if we should make a determination that we would allow, you know, fraternal organizations do it and not private businesses, or you want to let everybody totally do it, or you don't want to do it, but I guess we've been asked to at least have the discussion, so I don't know. I suppose, do you think our intentions are to do this at a J-Cow meeting, or do we want to bring it to a city council meeting?
I think you'd have to have government services take it to J-Cow.
I think that's the intentions, but do we, do you have a date when you would think you were gonna do this yet?
I was under the impression that staff was looking into some things before they'd put it on the agenda. I'd like to hear it as soon as we can.
Well, I just want, you know, they're pressing me today to know what we think about it, and so, I was just wanting to bring it up, so we could have kind of a, nobody could say, "Well, you're not talking about it," or "You're talking about it behind our backs," or "You're talking about it."
Is staff ready to bring it to J-Cow?
Your Honor, I might suggest that, we can't have it on tomorrow night's meeting, because we don't have the forty-eight hours notice, but let's put it on the next J-Cow. Let's put it on the agenda, and if staff's got something for us, great. If they don't, we can still have the discussion to see what the council thinks.
I'd very much like to have, hear what staff has to say across the board, including law enforcement. You know, someone fairly new to the council, I'm not aware of, you know, what some of the background issues might be that would affect our decision on that.
Well, I think we are being asked to make some type of a definitive up or down on it, yes or no. So, I'm just trying to move the process along as far as trying to get a definitive answer as to where we may want to go. I will tell you quite honestly, I've had some of our neighboring mayors who also have banned it like we have, ask me and tell me, "Well, we're watching Batavia to see what you're gonna do." So, you know, we're not the only ones that are faced with the idea of people asking us to do something, but there are people watching us to see what our history or our reaction's gonna be here, so, just so everybody knows. All right, I guess that's it.